Being seven o'clock, I'll open the meeting. We have an invoice for Bill for six thousand. For the, looks like for the, for two twenty-two and for three eight. So I have a motion to accept the.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
So we have on the agenda the continued four score holdings, um, special permit application. The, we have an email asking to continue, um, in reality they're continuing because the one, the big thing that we're waiting for is the order consulting and we just, um, tracked the order consultant. And so, um, hi Bill, this is going to our discussion just now, please accept the email of four, four score request, continuous planning board hearing to April third, two thousand and nineteen.
Make motion of extended, postponed until September, April third.
April third. All favor?
Aye. Stay.
Oh, that one too?
You guys did this, did this last night?
Oh, no.
Wait, 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 where, where do you? Go ahead.
Well, you did this last night, you know we're here.
This is for four score, are you?
For the, for the solar project?
No, 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 no.
No, for four score.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's either way it's open forum.
Oh, did we, I'm sorry.
Yeah, sorry.
Do we, do we have anybody who wants to speak for open forum? I totally missed that.
Solar project, yes.
No, this is an open forum session where someone can come up with something not on the agenda that they wish to address to the planning board, that's what open forum is about. So is there anyone in the audience who wishes to come up and discuss something under open forum?
Solar project is on the agenda at the end.
Yes.
Yes.
The, the subdivision plan for Masonic Woods is on the agenda, is the solar.
But that's.
It's a subdivision, it's a subdivision to, to finish their freeze for the.
It's a subdivision plan, it's not a site plan.
Correct.
So we have a few minutes, do we have anything else to?
Um, yeah, I just wanna, through the chair, if I could, I just had one quick question.
So we have new, um, we'll just kind of look at new business that we, that you just found, like, a few minutes before you walked in, so.
Correct.
Do you wanna talk about the proposal for an AP review?
Yeah, it's on the agenda, we can do that.
Oh, okay, sure.
So I, I got it in yesterday, sent it out to you last night, uh, it's included in your patch here as well. Number ten, I think, in your pack. So the proposal is, uh, you know, to do, uh, basically desktop peer review of the odor mitigation plan submitted by four score. This is submitted by, uh, fifteen babies from community consultants. And I, I think it's a pretty thorough, you know, view of their proposed mitigation controls. The only question I had is whether you would want to ask the consultant to come to a planning board meeting, which is not included in the scope of work. Primarily to be the written narrative with all the analysis. No actual presentation to the board. So I don't know how you feel about that, whether you would want, you have the consultant here and then people in the audience could ask questions or it could be some back and forth with the applicant as well.
Does the board feel comfortable not having the engineer here or is there, how would, would it be acceptable for open meeting law if we read the proposal and then email of the consultant any questions that we had? Um, what is?
Well, I mean, I think you would, uh, accept or you would, you would left with the narrative, you left the ability to ask questions and have answers at the meeting.
Yeah, in case we had public.
I think the applicant would prefer to get it all out on the table at once so that there were no objections.
Not going back and forth.
It makes sense to expedite us.
The applicant would pay anyways.
Yes.
So if, I mean, if, I mean, if it's gonna, it's probably gonna be in their benefit and it's gonna be in our benefit, it's gonna be in the residents' benefit.
Yep, yep.
It makes sense to. Now, they're located in Massachusetts, right?
Yes, yes.
South door.
So I can get back to Christine then and ask her to add in, uh, one meeting before the planning board?
Yep, please.
See if they would revise the cost or not, but then pass that on to four score.
Okay, we'll see.
Yes.
They have conference calls, up to two one-hour conference calls are budgeted.
I wonder if that's.
Yeah.
If we could do that in place.
Yeah, just like what she's saying.
Just to replace one?
Well, take, take, could the comments call be exchanged for a, uh?
For a in-person.
Person-to-person meeting.
Okay.
Oh, no, evening.
We don't wanna cause any, any more, just random expenses.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
Exactly.
I know for, um, for the VGG peer review, our consultant was on the phone with their consultants a lot.
Right, that's what I was thinking.
But I'm not sure this one will really require as much.
We'll see what she says. Yeah.
I have to say, I mean, if it's, if it's a few, I mean, depending how much, if it's a, you know, five hundred dollars, I mean, I'm saying if it's not. Take another click.
Do the contract or do we have to wait till seven fifteen?
It's not at a public meeting, so I can.
Yeah, it's.
Yeah, um, there's a bunch of material in your packet, we can look at number eleven and do that.
Alright, okay.
You remember for the Carpenter Hill Road solar, we wanted engineer to contact one of the, the closest of others to the, uh, proposed energy storage containers. And this memo from David Offrex of Rego Solar, it says that he's tried to reach out to that neighbor, hasn't had, um, success in terms of, um, actually speaking with that person. So I think he's asking, you know, for directions, should we continue to try or should we assume that lack of response by the neighbor indicates that they have no problem and therefore we can assume that, um, that everything is okay.
Did they include a copy of the letter so we know exactly how it was worded? So we know what kind of information, so it didn't look like a scam?
I don't remember seeing that.
Okay, I didn't think, I didn't remember either.
Has this office tried to reach out to them?
No.
No, should we?
Do we know the applicant's name?
The neighbor's.
No, I don't. I, I assume we could figure it out if it was.
Do we know the address?
Yes. It's down on one sixty-nine, that's, that's the one, okay. I thought we had.
I'd like to get a, and, and a yea or a nay, just some, some sort of.
And if.
Do you want, I'll try to reach out to that person then.
If you don't have your luck, then we can talk about it.
Can we ask if we need a copy of the letter, just so for our files, we have proof that this letter was sent in.
And where it was sent?
Exactly. And now we typically send a certified letter for letters, do you think we should do the same if we can't reach them by telephone, send a certified letter so at least we know about it and if it's been put in the letter? If within ten days we don't hear back, we assume that, um, you're saying it's okay. I think that'll be, seem like a.
Could be on vacation.
Well, that's exactly. And not realizing, right, it might be a winter bird, and not realizing that this is a timing matter. Well, it's seven ten, um, we will, we have a continued public hearing for ZPC Energy Solutions, um, the Masonic Woods, the definitive subdivision plan offered for.
Okay, come on. I have a sign sheet, do you have any material for that part here? Here's one there. Here it is, I'm sorry.
Brian Wentworth from BSE Group, uh, with the engineer surveyor, um, that submitted on the app of ZPC Energy Solutions. Uh, John Pollack is here, uh, from ZPC Energy as well. You know, the, the, what we're here to discuss tonight is the definitive subdivision plan, um, is, um, basically to, between requirements, uh, ahead of the, the proposal or solar array on the property. The, we have the plans on the table there, but, um, the area subdivision plan consists of a five hundred foot cul-de-sac, um, and gravel road, proposed gravel road, uh, eighteen feet wide. You know, just wanted to know, you know, this is, and we've discussed with Bill at this point, this is a free zone requirement, so, uh, gravel road proposed in terms of subdivision plan, uh, would not go forward until. Uh, just the, the, or, or, the, the, the road is not proposed unless the, um, solar array project goes through.
Okay.
Two, three, so. You know, we submitted ahead of time, uh, Mr. Andrew reviewed, uh, from Graves Engineering, uh, a couple of times resubmitted and, uh, there's still the comments that Graves had. The division divides one of the existing lots, uh, owned by Masonic Home, uh, also referred to as the overlook. Wooded lot, uh, lot eight, uh, would divide it into two lots, lot A and A D.
Exactly, it's this.
We could pull up, we have a cover sheet, we can show the location of the roads. He's saying game road coming out from the village.
Okay.
Access is, there are some homes up there.
What's the district?
It's the village district.
Does he get, we allow solar, the village, uh, solar.
What was?
Special permit.
The question, is, it's under a special permit?
I believe so. Is it special permit?
No. It's an allowed, uh, it went by rights.
You know why, because when we, I believe in, we said to this, we've had solar allowed everywhere.
Right.
Plan review in all districts.
Okay. That's all, it's okay. So if I'm reading this correctly, it's really only one of butter to this project, but I don't see.
On this side? Yep, it's not here. Is it, is it currently wooded now or is it?
Yes.
Currently wooded?
Mike, if I'm reading this correctly, there's, is there satisfied everything you asked me?
We've done some reviews on this project now, and a lot of the comments were getting right away, uh, files and requirements, um, some discussion on what the road would consist of, constructed. Obviously, this subdivision as proposed couldn't, couldn't be, uh, couldn't be accepted as a public way without more improvements, sort of thing, and drainage and all that. So I believe the board has seen other projects very similar to this in the past, so we try to follow that same old and be consistent with, um, what it should include, managing the drainage in some fashion, which they've added. Uh, obviously, if this develops further into a, into a solar project, they'll have to address that. But at this point, with the third review, they've already addressed all my technical comments.
Are you taking questions at this time? Not yet, just give us, we'll open it up in a minute. Bill, on the purpose of the plan, on the other solar, um, freezes that we've had, did, I can be remembering wrong, doesn't it usually say that they're freezing for the purpose of solar? Now, this one doesn't say that, so the purpose.
I thought that was here somewhere.
So we have the purpose to, to, to subdivide lot shown on sheet, um, it doesn't say, it just says freezing, but it doesn't say freezing for solar, and I, and it usually.
I'm not sure it's in the plans, I know it was, it was included in the waiver request that was submitted, so.
So it doesn't have to freeze rate any one particular.
But normally it does say it and it's always. Well, if it's in the waiver, waiver request, we'll make, it's, we decide anyways, it's like an addendum to the plan, if I'm not mistaken.
They're creating the two lots out of the whole, what I thought I said, two hundred and twenty acres.
Lot eight.
So it's already broken up into lot, lot eight?
If you look at the, the sheet before the.
This one?
So the, the lot, um, this is the, the, um, Masonic Home, the overlook is, is kinda up here.
Okay.
Um, this is all their property, uh, this was previously divided, uh, through an AR supplemental, uh, I think it was endorsed by the planning board May of last year.
Yep, remember that one.
The subdivision, uh, or the, the cul-de-sac is here, the new lot line dividing lot eight, uh, into eight A and eight B.
Okay. And this is gonna encompass both lots, I mean, it's gonna be over both lots, A and B?
The.
The solar.
Um, well, I, I believe it's just proposed for the B, but, um, have they submitted the site plan yet, though?
No.
No, no, so. First here for the.
Here's the calculation of the upfront expect managed coverage.
I haven't, haven't checked it. Brian, there was some question about the Masonic Home Board approving the subdivision plan, have you clarity on that question?
Yeah, so.
We have confirmation that the, the overlook board has approved everything and we're, we're all ready to go.
Okay.
Do we wanna get that ready for them or you said?
Yep, yeah, please.
Sure, okay. Okay.
Any other questions, it seems like it's, it's pretty simple, this stuff.
I don't, but you wanna explain the procedure for the, the people in the, in the, exactly what this is and what details?
This is just the, um, the, the, the subdivision that's required, so they, they submitted this preliminary, which froze the land, um, to, because before the solar moratorium came place, they froze it so they could kind of, um, build as, as. I think we were doing so previously, you know, we had the moratorium and then we'll have a bunch of changes coming up at town meeting for solar.
Okay.
So that's the only, the, like, the whole entire reason that this plan is done is just for that freeze, um, they, I guess technically they could go ahead and do this, but we've done twenty-six of these. This is number twenty-six, I believe, and.
But at this point, they can't do anything other than this.
Right.
Yeah, I have a problem with that. Can I go?
Say your name.
Uh, my name's Ray Fitzgerald. I live at forty-two Burlingame Road.
Do you wanna show, show us what that is on?
Can I see the, the map, the access road, please?
This is. So this is Burlingame Road through here, and this is Masonic Home.
So I need to see exactly where the access road is.
So, no.
So where the access is.
And, oh, next one.
Okay, this is the access road, my house sits right here, they're eighty feet off my property line. And.
That's right, yeah, okay.
Is it on the other side of the street?
No, it's on the opposite side, this is my wall, this is my house, where they marked it.
So this is the road, this is your house here.
Correct.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
Where they marked it, they're only eighty feet off my wall. Okay, second of all, is I have an autistic granddaughter who's at my house, Monday, Wednesdays, and Saturdays. And she's afraid of loud noises, I can have my sister-in-law bring all the paperwork about my granddaughter, but it had all her, uh, social security number on it, that's why they bring it this time. Okay, so I'm the one that's gonna be mostly affected by this, 'cause I'm gonna have to listen to the construction equipment. The, uh, land of the fellow buncher, I drive little bits, I worked on solar projects before. Yeah, I, I, I work out of a company out of Connecticut, so I called the EPA and there's, uh, the town has not filed for an EPA study or a DOT study for Burlingame Road. So Burlingame Road, I know for a fact, is not gonna handle equipment that weighs ninety-eight thousand pounds coming in on a seventy-five foot tractor trailer. Burlingame Road at its widest point, where you guys planned the access road, is only twenty-five feet from curb to curb, and you're only putting a twenty-foot road widening to the, uh, access road. So how are you gonna turn a truck that's seventy-five feet long on a twenty-five foot road going into a twenty-foot road? You can't do it. And on the opposite side of that road, there's a two-foot drop-off, and that's all wetlands. So when you're pulling that much weight going out, when you try to make a left-hand pivot, that weight pushes the tractor forward. So if that guy drops a set of spears off the road, he punctures a fuel tank or an oil pan, the oil pan holds, I believe, twelve gallons of oil. Average fuel tank is two hundred and seventy-five gallons, so if he punctures a tank, all that oil and diesel fuel is going into the wetlands and into the stream. And that's the only way that they can get in, because the opposite side of Burlingame Road, where it comes in off the hill, the low bed only six, six inches off the ground, you'll never get a truck through there. And then, that road's coming a pite as it is, putting that much weight on that road is definitely gonna destroy it. That, that road is not gonna handle that weight of all the trucks going up and down that road. And what about the school? It's gonna be disrupting the school. My major concern is my granddaughter, what am I supposed to do with my granddaughter? She's afraid of noises, I can't, you know, it's, I talk loud in the house, she cries, Papa, Papa, my ears, no, don't yell. Mom went after listening to trucks coming down the hill with a jake brake on, trucks slamming their tail leads, excavators slamming their buckets into the ground to pull up a piece of a ledge. My granddaughter's not gonna be able to take that, and I can't afford to.
Where is she the rest of the time?
At my son's house in, uh, Dudley. We can't, it's, to get her her property care is a thousand dollars a week, I can't afford that, my son can't afford that. So I pay him five hundred dollars for the three days, and the other three days she comes to my house with the speech therapist, behavioral therapist. You know, I can provide all the documents, but I, the documents that I had had a social security number on it, so I didn't wanna gas that up.
I don't wanna say it.
But that's my main, what am I gonna do with my granddaughter?
I don't know what we can do about that.
I mean, I, you know, she's afraid, it's, she's afraid, it's listed on the thing as a hearing, afraid of loud noises, and that's gonna be loud, especially with the jake brakes, I know, I drive a truck, I've driven for thirty years, and that's the only access they can get down. So my suggestion is that you have the town engineer do an impact study on the road, see what the weight limit of the road can handle. 'Cause I know it's not gonna handle thirty-five ton. And just like say, how are you gonna get a seventy-five foot truck down a road that's only twenty-five feet wide, with all the cars coming across, you'll have to close the road, there's no traffic to get down.
Did Jerry chime in on that, in this?
No, no.
So that, that'd be my question, is, you know, when do environmental impact study on it? Because I know the solar farm down on Richardson's Corner Road, three years ago, that was killing migrating birds that were coming back from wherever they migrated from, and that was on New Center Five, New Center Seven, from the heat glare coming on. I mean, there has to be another access way to put, so, you know, have their trucks come in instead of coming down Burlingame Road. Because you got the drainage ditch that you just guys did, it took us four months for you guys to come dig it all out, 'cause it always keep getting flooded, it was going off and crossing the other side. So my question is, if you're gonna put that road over the drainage ditch, you're gonna have to widen the drainage ditch, put a, a pipe probably ten, twelve inches round down, probably forty, fifty feet long, and connect it to the drainage system. Who's responsible for that?
My only concern with even if you move the access road, the noise of the construction is still gonna be heard through the trees. So unfortunately, as a planning board, our limitation, what we can and cannot allow is extremely limited. And I know Carpenter Hill is similar to Burlingame, um, and they handle the equipment, um, we can have Jerry chime in, but I'm, and we feel free, we honestly, truly do, just know that what we are allowed to limit is extremely limited.
I understand that, but what am I supposed to do with my, my granddaughter? I can't afford a thousand dollars, you guys ain't gonna pay me the money, the nursing home's not gonna pay me the money for the solar company, so it's a big investment in my life.
Even, let's just say that we, we said, okay, fine, we'll deny the entire project based on that, they'll go to Land Court and win anyway, so just know.
Well, I'll, I'll fight, I'll fight, I'll take it in court too.
Because it's all about zoning, it's all about regulations itself.
My question is, how did it get from residential to agricultural?
So this. It's never.
So it's actually part of the village district, right? Right here, right here, so this whole section here is village district, which by right.
Yes.
Allows certain things, by right it doesn't allow other things.
Alright, so.
But that is not prohibited in this.
That's correct.
In this, so is, is your road here?
I'm a forty-two.
Yeah, so, yeah, so this was changed.
So this is Burlingame Road, right?
Yep, yep.
So the access road's right here, my house is right here, this is my wall.
So you're in the village district also.
Right. So my, and the other question is, when they clear cut all that land, is the water gonna go?
I know it's studied with the drainage.
Right. So that drainage is not gonna handle all that water.
The drainage will be much more detailed with the actual site plan.
So there's, there's two steps that they need to get through, they, the site plan, uh, uh, sorry, the subdivision plan, basically what they're saying is we're dividing this one lot into two lots.
Right.
And we're putting an access road here, that's, that's all that says.
Right.
And then, when, when, if, if this gets approved, then they need to come back with a site plan.
Right.
That shows exactly what they're gonna build there, how they're gonna build it, what the drainage is gonna be, and it's, it's a lot more details than just what's needed for a subdivision plan.
So like, like I suggest, I think you should have the town engineer do a, a study on the road.
Prior to the site plan, that's, that's probably appropriate.
When we, when the site plan is in front of us, we'll get the comments from all the boards in the building.
Right.
Um, they'll all chime in and give us, and we can, and we can also ask Jerry specifically to take a look at the road and not just, not just say, it looks good to me, actually go out and, and take a look and to make sure that it's gonna be safe.
So while this plan is saying, we're, we're taking one lot, we're making two out.
Right.
Period.
Yeah, so that's, you know, right.
That's all we can really roll on tonight.
And during the site plan review also, we could possibly work with the applicant to try to, um, I don't know how much, we, how much power we actually can have to, for the hours of building, but maybe they'll be able to work with you a little bit to have.
Right, well, my question is, it's, it's the noise that's gonna bother her, I mean, when you take an excavator, you start slamming into the ground, trying to break up ledge, that makes a lot of noise. Especially with the trucks coming down with the jake brake on, I, I can't move my daughter, I don't have the money to put her, what it costs for her to go to deep here, full-time, that's over a thousand dollars. She needs, like you said, I got two therapists for her speech, I have a therapist for her behavior, I have a therapist for her legs, 'cause she wears braces. I have a therapist for her legs, because she wears braces on her legs. So I have all those at my house.
I mean, I absolutely, I...
Is there a way that they can move the road further down, or further up the hill?
This said, just because you see the subdivision road there, there's no guarantee that that's...
That road may never get built.
Right. That road shouldn't get built, because like I said, the road is...
It probably won't, we can't guarantee that it won't. And we have to look at it as if it is being built.
You have to look at my, I just moved from the city to here to avoid that same thing that happened to me in the city. Because when I bought the house, they really said that land was never gonna be built.
And, right.
Right, now all of a sudden...
And there's also a bridge that you can buy.
But the good thing to know is that solar farms are actually pretty quiet, so...
Could be a lot worse things going on.
I've worked on solar farms, I know how they operate.
So you don't get the, you don't get the barking dogs, you know...
No, but I get, I'm gonna have the construction equipment, the fellow bunches, the wood chipper.
Right, but that's for a limited period of time.
That's probably gonna be four months.
That's not gonna be ongoing for years.
But that's gonna go from Monday morning through Friday.
Absolutely.
Right, so what am I gonna do with my daughter, my granddaughter on a Monday, a Wednesday, and Saturday?
Is there a way to get into the site?
They most likely won't be building on Saturdays, will they?
No, they're not going to on Saturdays. So it's only two days.
So Monday and Wednesday, what am I gonna do with my granddaughter?
So, you have it Monday, Wednesday, Saturday?
Yes.
Saturday, don't worry about it, they don't work on Saturdays.
Alright, I guess when the time comes, we have to consider work, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday.
During the site plan, it is, it is likely that the applicants don't wanna make enemies with their neighbors.
I understand that, but I've seen what a fellow buncher does.
Okay, let, she's talking, please.
I mean, we can't, we are, we have, there's some restraints that we have on us. We can't, we can, we can do certain things, but we could work with the applicant and ask them to try to modify their hours a little bit, just to make your life not miserable. So, at this point, again, the whole, the whole reason we're doing this is just because they're freezing the zoning so they can put in a solar farm. When the site plan comes in, there's a lot more to look at. Screening and the traffic and everything, anything, the construction plan and everything, it's all part of that process. So that's when there'll be much more participation, you'll have, there'll be a lot more detail. This is what you see is what you get.
Right.
Again, I don't think I've ever seen a subdivision actually, not one of these freezing ones. I mean, the whole reason why they're doing this was just to freeze the land to be able to put the solar farm in.
Yeah, I know, and I, and I thought the town, town met its solar requirements.
We, no. So at the town meeting on May twentieth is when the solar committee, they're recommending...
But their grandfather.
But their grandfathered in.
There's nothing we can do, they're grandfathered in.
That's why this freezes here.
Alright, so you're the engineer, correct? Who's the company that did the, inspected on it, the markers, the site work?
Survey.
Survey.
Surveyors. The applicant did it, no, no.
Because my question is, why, if they can't just eliminate that road period?
It may never get built, this is what we're saying. We have to wait and see.
They built this subdivision, this, to comply with our regulations, to, just for the freeze. Again...
But I thought it, I thought it had to be a hundred-and-eighty feet off property line, not eighty...
We'll get into that when we have the site plan.
I think that's a good question, Mike, can you answer that question? Mr. Pusher, the subdivision road does not have to be a hundred-and-eighty feet off the property line?
No, it doesn't.
Alright, then that's another problem, is in my well, my well is right next to there. So if you guys start digging and blasting, you close my well up, who's responsible for my well?
So these are all issues that get looked at when the site plan's submitted, which it hasn't been yet.
Alright, so when I come back, who do I bring the documentation for my granddaughter for autism?
I don't think that's part of us. I'm sorry to say that, but...
We don't need proof, we believe you. We don't, we don't need the documentation of us, where, there's no reason for us not to.
I think it suggests the Board of Health. The Board of Health reviews the plan also. If you bring that to them, they just...
Yeah, because like I said, I called the EPA, and the EPA didn't even, that was, the town even filed for a EPA study.
Because they're not that, they're not at that point yet.
So the Board of Health will also, every board gets a copy of the plans when they come in, so...
Do you have a number of them, or just, I contact them online?
Do any way, just...
If you just go to our, I'd say...
Two-four-eight, twenty-two-hundred, ask for Board of Health.
Or talk to Jim Fulbrook, nice enough guy.
And he'll be able to, you know, provide, maybe there's, maybe they have more control of that kinda stuff, because we don't, we're strictly zoning.
And maybe he doesn't have control.
Alright.
But if anybody did...
What we can do is you can call the Board of Health and actually be put on the agenda to talk about the subdivision plan, and then you can go and say, and talk about it.
And then we take that, we take them into consideration at the site plan, again, but the site plan, every detail. We're talking about what trees they take down, and, you know, what, you know, drainage and access roads and all that kinda stuff. So that, that's what you wanna be at.
So I talked about the town engineer too, I contacted, what else about that, Burlingame Road?
For the width of the road?
That's highway department.
Highway superintendent.
And again, if you go to our website, every phone number is...
Yeah, I've called it, but a lot of times I don't get any answers, so they don't even call me back.
Just go down there. Especially just stop down during the, if you have time.
Yeah, because they talk to me, I'm on the road at five-thirty in the morning.
Yeah, correct, that's why.
Sometimes I don't get home till eight o'clock.
Yeah, so it's tough.
Well, like I said, you know, you should do, if you're planning, like, just, I recommend then that you guys do a weight study on the road, because that road's...
That will happen later.
When the site plan is submitted, they'll get, the applicant will get notice too.
Yeah, because I didn't even get a notice about the solar farm. I never got a letter.
You didn't get a notice for the...
Nope.
Subdivision one?
Nope. Didn't get nothing.
Looks like you checked the letters list.
What if you grow on the end road, Green Fitzgale? I found out from my neighbor.
Now, do you own or rent?
I rented.
Okay, so, so it probably went to Peter Bork?
Yep.
It probably went to Peter Bork.
Alright.
Yeah, so he's the one, he's the one that was gotten that information.
Okay. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello.
Name and address, please. Okay, did, I know our, did that pick it up?
If you weren't saying that when we were trying to read... I'm from over point, and we're representing Maureen in Euclid, Caplet, thirty-two T Wall Road. I'm just wondering, at what point does the EPA environmental assessments check, Brian?
If required, during the site plan process.
So when, when the site plan gets submitted, based on the lot size or any conservation issues or other reasons why it would trigger that kind of...
So those reasons would be apparent at this time? I mean, what's the difference between...
Not at this time, no.
Because we don't know, the site plan, we don't know how, how big the solar farm's gonna be or anything. We don't have any details. Again, the only reason this is in front of us is for them to achieve the zoning freeze. So saying that they can...
I don't understand what you mean, you don't understand the footprint that they're going to submit, this is...
We don't know.
Nothing's been officially submitted.
This is just saying, this is just saying, we wanna freeze the zoning. That's it.
I understand that point, okay. I was just confused when I saw a footprint and a rough sketch of a solar plant, that said we want to be designed for submission.
Wasn't submitted to us.
What is this, Burlingame Road?
There could be a conceptual...
It could be, but that is nothing officially, nothing that, we didn't even see that it's nothing that has to do with us at all.
Okay, so has any of the abutters received any information, like...
They got notices of the subdivision?
They should have received notices of the subdivision.
So any, any abutters within...
Owners, not renters, owners.
Any owners within three hundred feet of the property line would have received...
Do we have any confirmation that we've received any... Can we receive that from the town? From zero points submitted out themselves, okay, so it doesn't sound like we've received any grant designer...
Because there is none.
You would have, you would have only received the notification that said that that property would be in here for this...
Gotcha, so receiving something from zero point was just confusing then.
So, and then, when they submit their site plan, they will...
I understand that, but with the design on it, it's not...
So, I mean, there, there could be a preliminary design out there somewhere, but it hasn't been submitted to us, and it's not, I mean, but when it gets submitted to us, it'll be public record, and you could actually come in here and view it.
At any time.
At any time.
So in a nutshell, at some point in time in the future, something does get submitted, what is the trigger for the E P A requirement or the no-go order?
It depends, it depends on the details of the plan?
Yeah, I, I can't even suggest what the plan might be, I haven't seen it yet myself, so...
I, I'm asking what the trigger points are.
Yeah, well, there, there's a number of trigger points for environmental review. And I haven't got any food to say if it's gonna trip any of those thresholds. We have to see a plan first.
I'm not asking for a point.
Well, the amount of wetlands, right, and...
I'm not gonna recite all the regulations, there's a number of regulations and thresholds for different permits that the engineer, the design engineer, has to look at and make sure they address. And we as reviewers for the planning board, review as well.
Yep.
Okay.
And it's a very detailed process, but again, you, everybody will be notified when the site plan comes in, when the hearing's gonna be, and it usually is a couple of hearings, it isn't like we come in and we...
So the confusion's stemmed from receiving something that looks like a quad, that's all.
Anything that might have been given out, purely conceptual, and, and we have not...
I'm just saying that that was not clear.
Oh, okay, okay, okay. And that was, we have not officially applied for our, you know, for given notification on the site plan process, which we intend to do, and I was just gonna ask, what was the timing for the, the next site plan?
When you submit a site plan.
So we have to submit first, yeah.
So you'd make an appointment to come in and submit?
Yeah, exactly, so we've done that, and, you know, I understand.
But we haven't approved this yet.
We haven't, we haven't approved it yet.
That's what we're here, exactly, okay. One step ahead of time, we understand that.
I would like to point out there was a mistake on the agenda.
Okay.
If you look at the seven-ten P M item on the agenda, it says Masonic Woods Way to finish the subdivision plan off Brookfield Road.
Sort of set off Burlingame.
Yeah, yeah.
So I think that, my recommendation would be to continue the hearing to the next meeting.
I think that's a good idea.
So that people who didn't realize that this was off Burlingame Road and didn't file it to come, would see it on the next agenda and can come and offer comments.
Okay. That's unfair.
Only because it's, it's a concern to us.
Not if they're renting, not if they're two, two houses away from the town area.
This was a continuation of the opening of the hearing.
Correct.
And we announced that that meeting then would be continued to tonight, but when the agenda was posted, which people look at, it says Brookfield Road as opposed to Burlingame Road.
And that was an internal mistake or whatever?
Yep, that's our fault.
Time-wise, we're a good, we're a good time-wise, that we can hear this April 3rd, maybe?
To the next meeting?
I'm not there, I know if you were to do, you're the one to ask on that, but it wasn't another extension.
I'm just wondering, with our time, with our, with the timeline, you would...
Okay, just to, through the chair, if I could say, the next meeting?
Yeah, the definitive hand plan has to be approved by what they...
I think it's March thirtieth.
So we're gonna need, we're gonna need, if that's the case, we're gonna need an extension. If it was, you know, an internal error, that's...
When do you plan on submitting your site plan?
As soon as, as soon as we get this approved.
So the, so technically, the next meeting that we, I don't even know if we, I don't know what the agenda is, I don't know if we have time to...
Yeah, I think it's...
So technically, the, the soonest you can, can, you know, submit your site plan
Right.
is April 3rd.
Okay.
Anyways...
Again, I'm not, yeah, whatever, whatever that's...
So if we continue this to April 3rd, and we could also, does that make sense?
You could submit the site plan to... We want to make sure that the extension that we have runs out on March thirtieth.
Well, yeah, we'll... But will you give us an extension, you'd ask for an extension, you would technically need to ask for an extension.
We would hope that you would allow, I mean, just automatically give it, only because the, the mistake was here internally, that's why.
And I think that, well, it'd be more about us because we have, we have the deadline. We have sixty-five days from, correct, sixty-five days from the...
If you request it, we'll give it to you. Okay. I think that's just one thing. Let me double-check. That's a problem.
So, it was requested last month as well.
Yeah, yeah.
To extend it to...
We're extended, it's continued, now it's continued again.
Right, well, what happened though is you delayed starting the hearing because you had some...
Internal problems.
Some problem with the owner of the property, so we delayed opening the hearing
Okay.
to allow you time to...
And I think the last meeting you asked to extend it again, is that correct?
We got, yes.
The last, you asked us to extend. We had, we had you booked for the last meeting, last... So, so as long as... Push it up against that wall now. So as long as they ask for an extension, we'll grant it. Is that, is that fair to say?
And if the site plan is done...
Prior to...
We could just kinda piggyback and do, and, and, you know, finish, you know, prove that...
Submit that as soon as possible, we continue this, we get a vote on this, it's approved, and we can also give the site plan at that, at point in time.
So, so us delaying this for one meeting won't really get in the way of anything.
So I, I would need to advertise fourteen days before the hearing. I wouldn't be able to get it in for the third.
Okay.
But if you got it in next week, I could advertise for the seventeenth.
Seventeenth.
So if, if this is continued to the April 3rd hearing, to meet it, need to submit the site plan before the April 3rd meeting, before this is approved.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You can't, you can't, you can't hear it.
It's gotta come in next week in order for me to advertise for the...
Okay. But you could, you could, yeah, we couldn't put it on the third, but you could, could they submit the site plan prior to us approving the subdivision plan, that's also okay.
Yeah, of course, it'd be conditional on...
Right, 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 I mean, again, we're open, the delay is creating a ripple effect, we got that. But as long as we're getting approved, and then we could...
Yep, yep.
...move forward. I don't think, I don't think it'll delay the project at all. No, no.
I think it's fair for everybody, the applicants and everything, to have, you know, to, to fix the advertisement, you know, make sure the right, the right road is listed, and to, and maybe, in the meantime, we can send an email to Jerry and, you know, make a comment on the road to kinda make...
That might be, whoever's in Debbie's here tonight.
Why is Debbie here?
Wrong road.
So I would be able to attend that next meeting, correct?
Sure.
Okay, but let me just clarify one thing, though. When we're working on the subdivision, which is this here tonight, and the only reason we're continuing this tonight is because we had the wrong road on our notice. We had Brookfield Road and not Burlingame Road. So nothing's going to, it should take two minutes, because everybody's had, said what they need to say here, to approve this at our next meeting.
So honestly, if you're gonna approve it, so then my next step is what?
Board of Health.
Board of Health.
Yeah, absolutely. I'm sorry.
Thank you so much.
You have to yell sometimes, my boy.
I worked for thirty years at Charlton Elementary, I developed great patience. And I have lived on Burlingame Road, I'm a little bit further down.
Name and address?
I can see his house no lot.
Name and address for the record, we need that.
It's fifty-seven Burlingame Road.
And your name?
Monica Williams. And my huge concern is the access road itself. Having lived on that road for 59 years, that entire wooded area is filled with vernal pools, small streams, unbelievable number of animals, turtles, frogs. They've tried several times to put access roads in different places along Burlingame Road and they run into the same...
So you're like about this access road right here?
Yeah.
So you know that, that these, this is, this plan is only to freeze this land?
For zoning.
For zoning. So they're saying, we're just, we're doing all this, we're paying all of our engineers to create that plan just to hold the zoning, just so we can build the solar farm. So where this access road is, it really means nothing to anybody. When the solar plan does come in, and we don't know the size or anything about the solar plan, there will be an access road for the solar plan. Again, we don't know where it is. It'll be somewhere where they have frontage on a road. But the positive thing to think about is that they rarely use these once they're built, and they, they're not going to be building on vernal pools and conservation wetlands.
That whole forested area, all of it, is the number of birds, owls, woodpeckers. I'm just worried they're going to wipe out a huge area of forested land, and what's that going to happen? What's going to happen to our ecosystem, to the environment? We've pushed through so many things in Charlton for the sake of progress. At what point does progress become detrimental to our way of life?
So it is, so it isn't allowed use. So we are, we are not, that's not in our realm. We can't say, but if there's, if there's area up there that has wetlands on it, and so the vernal pools, they're not building a solar farm on that.
No.
So this all will need to be surveyed, and they'll, they'll have to, you know, the engineers will have to certify.
Conservation commission will have to look at it.
Will the EPA have to send someone in to check every bit of area?
If what you say, if you say when all that is up there, then most likely it'll be triggered that there'll be an additional. But that's going to be up after the engineers get up there and start looking and putting on a plan of what's up there. Right now, we don't know what, you know, what you're telling us, we know, but until it gets on that plan, we really don't, we don't, we can't even have an opinion on it. It's...
Well, I'm just wondering, will all of this end up being grandfathered in because of preliminary approval was made?
The land will be, the land, the zoning is locked on the land. That's it.
How many years? Just a reminder, how many years?
If at the town meeting, they decide to ban solar across the town by a zoning change, this is still allowed to be built.
So for eight years, they will be able to put a solar farm? They will be able to, they will be frozen with the comment when they submitted this preliminary. Whatever the zoning bylaws said, that's what the land is locked on for eight years.
So your concerns are more site plans. So when the site plan comes up, and we actually get a plan that says what they're going to build and how they're going to build it, that's when all those concerns would be addressed.
And then they'll mark the wetlands right on the plan, so you'll actually be able to, I mean, and if you know that there's a vernal pool, you should be able to actually take a look at the plans and see that vernal pool drawn right there.
I explored them all as a kid.
Yeah.
And caught many frogs and put them back, and turtles, and spotted salamanders, and we have huge number of birds nesting.
And that's why we have all of our, all of our boards, we have conservation, you know, we have highway. We all take a piece of this, you know, they all add their comments, and we, you know, we do our best to, you know, make the right decisions, you know, on...
Once again, once the site plan gets approved, I'm sorry, gets submitted, that's when all these concerns...
There'll be a lot more to talk about on the site plan.
And I'm not right there, how will I know when the next meeting comes up?
It's posted publicly. So it'll be on the planning board website, the meeting announcements will be there. You may have to do a little work on it.
And if you know, and if you know your neighbors with a 300 feet, they'll get it.
Between all of you, you know, communicate, you'll know. It needs to be, we usually, a week, at least a week in advance, but it's at least 48 hours before the meeting, it has to be posted.
And you can always call the planning board office and ask them when it's going to be on the agenda. Thank you.
Yeah, that you can do too.
That's the biggest help of all.
Or if you, it's always posted on our website, too. Right on the planning board page on the website. We have everything posted.
Okay. I will see you the next time.
I just wanted to say that the, in our, in our, you know, when we do the due diligence in all of our studies, we're going to do a structural integrity check on the road. So therefore, you know, because we know the weight limits of the trucks we're going to bring in. So from a road standpoint, an access standpoint, we know that we're going to get peer review, as well as consulting engineers going to have to verify what our, our studies show, correct? And then the other part of it is, when it's concerned about the ecological or whatever, concom has to be, it has to go through, you know, an approval checkpoint from there. So we, and we know what the rules and the laws of that are, and we have to abide by them. So for both of those concerns, that would be, you know, when we start the site plan review and the process, and it'll be discussed.
And what is, excuse me?
Excuse me. To be clear, though, that road could possibly go there.
That road could possibly go there.
Just for everyone to know.
Yeah.
Because they've done the study, and they've got a landmark there. So in order for us to approve that, the basic requirement of that road is going to be able to be built there. Yeah, if, again, we did a structural integrity of the road check, and it was, and it was fine?
I know, but to the next point.
Yeah, okay.
And what was your name again, sir?
My name's Tony. Tony Paul. I'm with Zero Point.
You're with Zero Point?
Yes.
Okay. You're a new face to Zero Point for me.
Ah, okay, yeah. I dropped off some things with Bill.
Okay.
All right, just one quick question. All right, so you're Zero Point, correct? Right? Now, we would be complying with the construction equipment, because you're going to build an access road, you're using the certain equipment down at the end of the access road.
We would have a stage area that would be identified on the site plan.
We just, we would like to continue this hearing. You guys, you guys can talk outside for as long, and sometimes the applicant with the letters is the best way to answer the little, those kind of questions. But we would like to finish rest of our agenda and continue this. So do we have a motion to continue?
Make a motion to continue the ZPT Energy Solutions Masonicum Woods Way to finish subdivision till April 3rd?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do I need a motion to ask for the extension is going to be extended?
So do we have a motion to extend the subdivision to April?
Make a motion to extend the subdivision approval or extension to April 3rd.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it, thank you.
Still need that letter, though.
Yes, oh, yeah, yeah.
And...
From overlook.
From overlook?
Yes.
From over Masonicum, yeah.
Do we still need to submit something, or are we approved through, is it April 3rd, or is it for the...
Yeah, so, and April 3rd, this should be, we'll get the letter?
This is for this again.
No, I know.
Just subdivision.
The deadline to get approval, I think that can...
Well, your request will extend it that way.
Yep. You voted to extend it, so once we get your letter to extend it, there's a lot about it.
That's what I'm getting at.
Yeah, okay.
So we still need to submit a letter?
A letter, yeah.
A quick email, a handwritten email is not, you know, a problem.
And I know we've done that before.
And it was because it was, wait, I didn't check. What was the name of the road you put on there?
Brookfield.
Brookfield.
Okay, yes, okay.
So it should be a five-minute meeting, and if you, and if we don't see our site plan, honestly, do they actually have to even show up if we're just going to, I mean, get this, ask this question?
No, it's not on the agenda, they don't need to come.
Well, there may be...
Not for the site plan.
The subdivision plan, they will need to be here next week, just in case there's other people that went to Brookfield Road and said, oh, I don't know what about that one.
We'll put the offer fine to make it through.
Very good, thank you.
Neither did.
Okay. So we have the Graves contract, I think it's like six months later.
A little bit more.
I'd like to speak a little bit about that.
Absolutely.
So Al Gordon was always very good at reminding me when the annual contract was up, and with everything that's been going on with us and at the company, it kind of slipped through the cracks. So I was reminded of it by my assistant. So this really expires the end of June, it covers the balance of until year 19. So obviously, you know, we would like to continue our services with the board, through this and beyond.
It's often nice of you to work for last week on free, I was...
I also want to, to address my absence at the last meeting. And I don't make apologies. I think most of you guys are going to be long, and I'm honest about everything. And I had three commitments that night. I had to choose one. I had to choose my own project with my client to go to. So I was not able to be here for an important meeting. I know it was an important meeting, the definitive subdivision, I must not have been as well as you guys don't care about it yet. So I truly apologize for not being here and having someone to ask questions of if it came up. I tried to make myself available over the phone that day before, if anyone had questions. I did speak briefly about that. So again, I apologize for that. It's an unusual circumstance to have that happen. Frankly, I can't remember another time I missed a meeting that the board is asking me to be at. And almost 20 years now of work for the board, so I couldn't have been more inconvenient. I understand with the timing of everything, but I wanted you to hear it from me personally. I apologize for it.
It was good.
So, yeah.
So since we're pretty much into here, I think that no matter, I mean...
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion, we approve this agreement for services with Graves Engineering.
Can I ask a question before? Um, how, do we have a copy of last year's contract so we can compare it?
Actually, the year before?
Yeah, that's, sorry, that's my...
James, put your hands out if I don't know where...
I have it.
Thank you.
So let me second the motion, now we can discuss it.
Okay.
That's it. Just get the procedure through.
Can this be... I mean, I think we'll be, we would be discussing this again in June.
No, well...
Prior to June.
June. May, probably, I think.
May, probably, is what I'm thinking.
So I think at this time...
Oh, no, it's July 1st, so we could, we could push it into June. So it was...
June 30th, this. So you know this ends on June 30th?
Right, the new one will begin July 1st, yes.
Mike, other than some of the fees, Reader's Digest version, has anything really changed? It's with a...
No. The language is the same as the last, as it's been for a while. We haven't changed the standard terms. The rates obviously get adjusted every year. You'll see there is a new position created, senior project manager. That isn't going to apply to you necessarily because of the, whether you guys are aware of it or not.
I was going to ask that.
The owner of the company, Don Graves, retired. Myself and another bought the company from him. So we had to create another position, a management position called senior project engineer for certain projects. Now, again, that won't apply to you folks for the most part.
Oh, but we like his rate better.
And you won't, he won't be billed at the chief engineer rate.
Okay, okay.
And see, we build it all tonight, I'm not, I'm here on a full night.
Is it you and Jason? No.
Jeff.
Jeff Hall.
Yeah, sorry, that's what I'm, yeah.
Oh, moneybags.
So I think, you know, and, you know, we like to keep tabs on what our competitors will, will peer review, and I will be hard pressed to find anyone that is as reasonable as us in our rates.
Thank you.
Right in line.
Right in line, which was the most very exciting, I see.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Good. All right. The motion's seconded?
Seconded. All in favor?
Aye. All right, thanks, Mike.
This will be our original, and we'll sign this.
That's our signatures?
Mm-hmm.
So we'll just use, this is our original, perfect, and then...
You may be home by 8:30.
We need to, can we make...
Here's another one.
Oh, okay.
I feel like things coming out.
Yeah, because that one, that one came out of the Graves contract, he has only one...
In your packet? You can have the other original.
Yeah. Perfect.
Should I date it today, Mike?
Today, is it?
Okay.
20th?
You should, if you want to date that one? Thank you.
Today, the 20th?
20th.
We have, we have some commitments to him, but he's been in Florida for the last two months.
Oh, okay.
He's going to be there for a while longer, I mean. But he's done. Thank you.
And the son, land of nothing to do?
He has three kids, and none of them had any interest in the business.
That's too bad.
They're doing other things.
That's all right.
That's good for you.
It's not true there's anything else on the agenda for Mike, unless you have any...
Yeah, no. Thanks, Mike, for coming out.
Fascinated by the changes.
That's not for soul or...
Do you want to see it?
I'd like to see your...
I've got two of these, so I've got one for you.
This is, so this is up in May for...
It's up, the solar is at the end.
So I prepared a draft legal notice for you to look at. I think we need to schedule the date of the public hearing. Whether you want to do that at one of the irregular meetings, or have a separate meeting for the hearing. We have a number of articles about how much time it takes.
Yeah, when do we need to have them done by? So the town meeting is the...
20th, I think.
So we need to be done by April 20th? Is that what you're saying?
We need to be done, I think it's 21 days before...
The town meeting.
The town meeting. So if you could do it by the end of April, you'd be fine.
I'd rather add an extra meeting and just have it be a shorter meeting, as opposed to us going to 11 or 12, trying to pack it onto tonight.
Thanks, Mike. See you later.
Bye-bye, Mike.
Good night.
I don't mind meeting one more time during April just to get this done.
Couldn't we do some of it tonight, since it's been a short meeting?
Well, no.
We can get the dates, though.
We'll look at it.
Oh, okay, you're talking, I'm sorry.
Sorry, I didn't say correctly.
Yeah, no, no, no. Talking about the public hearing.
Right. I wasn't there. I was just on what was in front of me.
Only because some of these, people can get very emotional, they're going to want to talk a lot, and I just, it just gets to be really late sometimes.
Nothing's controversial, though, really, what?
Well, marijuana stuff is always controversial.
Marijuana, yeah. And solar is always controversial. They have their own fan clubs.
Rezoning for Treehouse might be controversial this time, I don't know.
Oh, I bet it will be.
Really?
Yeah. It goes right up to the Cape and Hill lands, so I don't, you know...
Cape and Hill loves them, though.
Do they?
So I can't, I think they get along really well.
Yeah.
I would think they do, so...
I think they, they're, they're beneficial to each other.
They're actually talking to each other about trails, nature trails.
Oh, well?
And so they... Hops field, and...
Yep, benefits, because Cape and Hill is really, they're, they have a, financially, they really need help, so, you know...
Treehouse is their biggest group.
Charitable, that charitable events and...
The warming's your business.
I'm just, I'm just saying that that's a possibility.
Oh, I agree with you. Any one of these could trigger craziness, as we've seen.
So you don't think anything was that bad? I think that...
Energy storage is going to be a big one.
Gas transmission facilities?
Solar could be.
Solar.
Yeah. You're going to have some older landowner, and I don't mean older in age, but people that have owned their land for a while that are going to come in, who are going to want to fight their rights to not have a motor.
So if we did do a separate meeting the Wednesday before the end of the month, if it's the 24th?
Is that too late, just in case we don't get through it?
Yeah.
There's nine items on here. Do we want to try to do them all in one night, or do you want to break it up?
If this is the only thing on the agenda, though.
So, what date do you think? April twenty-fourth?
Twenty-fourth. I mean, it's not a requirement that you complete it within twenty-one days of town meeting, it's just that town meeting can't vote on it unless you make a recommendation within twenty-one days. So, you can still continue the hearing into May if you wanted to, but you have to make a recommendation or else town meeting can't.
So, can, can we, you're talking about the seventeenth and the twentieth, can we open it on the seventeenth and then close it on the twentieth and have it Tuesday?
Yes, we could open it on the seventeenth.
And then have the twentieth, like, and do some of it, I mean, how, I don't, I haven't seen our agendas yet, um, so I don't know what exactly...
Yeah, I don't know how busy the seventeenth is, so there's, there's, I mean, April is here and it didn't look too bad, but it's April third, seems pretty short right now.
So, for the seventeenth, um, Jean was gonna fill you in on this later, but we were planning on doing the kickoff meeting for the zoning diagnostic on the seventeenth, so we could push that back. Uh, we, well, we just, we may have a solar site planned for a sign for that meeting, four score, if that continues from the next meeting.
I was gonna say, is four score scheduled for the next, it is, right?
Four score is scheduled for the seventeenth.
Here we do, you could, in fact, approve it that night or it could be continued, I don't know.
The four score is on the third.
But it could be continued again to the seventeenth.
Oh, could be, oh, good.
On our draft thing for the seventeenth, it's on there, too.
So, um, so that's, you know, it's an hour and a half agenda, anyway.
On the one for the third, the agenda, it also says Brookfield Road.
What's that?
It also says Brookfield Road.
That hasn't been, that hasn't been posted yet, that's just a draft.
So, you want to make sure that gets chatted.
But maybe Janie has already submitted that because she won't be back in time, so...
She'll be back people first, I thought she said.
She'll be back next week in time to post it.
Ah, okay.
Because next Wednesday's the twenty-seventh, which is enough, but I'll make sure that she collects that.
Okay, so, that's, you said we're gonna start this on the seventeenth?
Yeah, well, I mean, we, we have a little bit of time to change if we need to, but I think we should start early, um, as we can. I mean, I honestly don't think, I think people will show up and I don't think it's gonna be bad, it's all, everybody, there's a lot of people going to town meeting, and I think it'll all be decided on the floor. So, um, the small things, I mean, talking about the solar piece, you know, the thirty cap, so people might have problem with that, but why would, if this...
Thirty...
The thirty total of solar facilities, that's what, that's what the...
So, they didn't go with, they didn't go with a megawatt limit, they went with the number of...
Thirty facilities, so there's already twenty-five, but twenty...
Actually, I gave you a handout.
Yeah, it's in there.
I saw that.
So, I mean...
It depends how you count them.
Yeah, I was gonna say, if, if everything that's proposed was built, we're pushing sixty megawatts, I know, but...
No, you shouldn't count forty-four of Worcester Road, you had a little note there, should this be counted?
Yeah, I mean, you did approve it and we did say that...
But they missed their, they missed their date.
It's rescinded.
We didn't extend it, we, we, they rescinded it because...
They rescinded and they missed the date to extend.
You rescinded it, they, they asked for an extension and you didn't.
They said no because they had a...
So, it was after the fact, it was after the expiration that they asked, but they requested.
Whether you counted or not, it was approved.
Way back.
But it's closed now, it's not, it's not an active, it's not an open approved because we had them, they, at, we, we, it was a choice. You can't have two site plans open at the same time on a same piece of property, so it, the other one was chose, so that, that was why, it's, they would have to settle over from the beginning. So, I wouldn't count it, but still, like, that, if that's a question, that's something you change on the floor. I, I think that the solar committee met for months, and that's what they said, thirty, then...
Well, well, they were under the assumption that we had about twenty-five, so I actually sat down and created a list. And, um, so if you don't count it, um, we were sure you'd have thirty, so I think we need to pick another number.
Okay, so we're, we're at our limit now at thirty.
At thirty.
Can we say thirty-five?
Um, thirty, thirty-five.
Thirty-one and a half? So, where was the megawatt, one, or total megawatt?
Some of them are only like a half a megawatt and allow a lot more projects, even, than a megawatt.
How many are actually built of those?
The megawatt could change over time.
Twenty-one.
So, only twenty-one of those are built and I need...
Well, twenty-one and one, two, three are under construction.
So, the list, I, is, uh, handout number eight.
So, yeah, I guess, I...
So, some of them are under construction now, as you can see, that would take the up to twenty-four.
Oh, I have one, I don't have one, I just don't have a, the seventeen.
I did, I did sort of number them this time, so...
Yeah, that was helpful.
So, you know, I think on the previous list, some of them might have been combined, that's how they got a lower number, they had their own interconnection. Considered that more of a discrete project, that's how I got any of this number.
Oh, I see, you've got like Griffin Road listed twice.
Well, no, we had actually two applications.
That's two applications, okay.
Griffin one and Griffin two. But one five, three bay path, a five bay path, sort of came as one project, but they're two separate owners, and they each have their own interconnection and sort of that is two rather than one.
Did we give this, did we get a copy of this to the solar committee?
I sent it to Laurie today, yeah.
Perfect.
So, we don't have to pick a number tonight, but just, you know...
Well, that's, I mean, during the open meeting makes perfect sense to let, let the public decide and...
Right.
I'm gonna, based on what I'm hearing, there's a handful, a small handful of people that are going, oh, my god, you're gonna cap it at thirty, and then there's the rest of the population that's saying, thirty? Why do we need thirty?
Well, we have thirty of them, yeah.
I just...
Because they're already built.
That's exactly what...
Would that number, like, would that number include the municipal, would they be exempt from that number?
Don't recall what...
I don't, I don't remember, I thought municipal was sep, was separate on the, but, but I, I read it a while ago, so...
I know, there was talk about that.
Any board shall approve no more than thirty large solar systems townwide, this limit shall not include municipal systems, uh, town-owned parcel, the bay path would be a regional school, but you could, you could change this if you wanted to.
Well, yeah, we'll wait, I mean, at the meeting, we'll, we'll all be read up on the details of this and we'll be able to come, um, well-prepared to...
Can I just walk my kids into the resolution? Bay Path has to be in special state legislation.
We wouldn't want to cap out and not be able to allow them to start.
Well, we could always change it later, too.
Right.
You know, if it decides they wanna do it and they wanna go in front of a town, town meeting and get that changed.
To do a home law, home, what do you call it, home law?
Um, some, uh, state legislators are looking to relieve themselves of whatever was adopted three years ago, that's mostly a technicality, I guess, at this point.
Okay.
Yeah, nothing moves fast, so it's a matter.
That one on Brookfield, which is approved pending outcome of moratorium, uh, number twenty-five?
They would be protected to bill, so they would, they would not have to comply with the current zoning, solar zoning by law.
Certainly, that one's in.
If, if you approve that.
Okay.
If it is a plan eventually, so that would apply to twenty-five and thirty-one.
Thirty-one.
But I think, one thing I was thinking of, maybe where we cite the number thirty, we might want to say including projects already approved or something to that effect. So, that thirty number includes all of these on the list. That's number, if you look at it.
So, that's almost sixty megawatts, which is more than enough to power our town.
I was just gonna try to...
So, we could cut off from the grid right now and be self-sufficient.
And yet my electricity bill keeps going up, so...
Maybe you'll get a big discount with the LG that's coming in, here's hoping.
So, you may recall for number twenty-five, that they did not apply for heat protection. Correct.
They did.
But they have now.
But they have now, so any changes between...
So, there's a question about that, so they, so I don't know whether they would have to conform for this new zoning by law or not, or some greater setbacks that would affect their layout of panels under the new bylaw.
Under the new bylaw, but...
So, that's, that's a question in terms of how that's going to affect them.
With their submittal now, doesn't that freeze that, or?
No, 'cause right, 'cause right now currently is moratorium.
Right, they didn't submit previously before the...
Yeah.
You're right, okay.
I think we might need to get help on that one.
I mean, I think that even, even for the projects that are, that have gotten their freeze, we should use as much discretion as we can with the new, because...
With the site.
The, the new, the new solar guidelines are pretty good, I think we were lacking a lot in, in some of the plans that we approved, just because we were under the impression that we had such little control. And to the, so even looking at our own old zoning, there are certain things, like an access road around and those kind of things, which seem for safety reasons, something everybody should have had, but something that we didn't...
Better buffers, better screening.
And those kind of things, I think we should just kind of take into consideration, maybe some of the setbacks we wouldn't be able to, but the applicants seem to be pretty willing to make us happy, as long as we don't have them doing something extreme, so...
Sure.
So, even, you know, freeze or not, I think we'll kind of take some guidance from the, um, the new, the new regs anyway. And I'm assuming that they'll do well at town meeting, but you never know what's gonna happen there, so I guess, could be a hundred after town meeting, who knows?
I mean, it's one thing, I'm scheduling myself in late the next day.
So, we'll all go and review all of these, the different, um, we have the power facilities, which we talked about, maybe pretty much everything's special permit because we should have a lot, a lot more discretion to make sure there's been a popping up next to home.
I did get a, an email from Laurie today after I sent her that list, and she said, um, I hoped that the battery storage article, which is on the code table, if you remember, would also include energy produced by wind power. I wanted it to include all renewable energy sources, so either I misunderstood or she wasn't, she didn't really present it that way, but...
Not how I heard her when the, she was here.
But she's talking about energy storage, so if we have, if, on the Warren article, if it says this, is it something that we can add to the, to the...
Well, I mean, we could even do it now if you wanted to, because it hasn't been advertised yet, but, or if you wanted to wait for the public hearing, you could make the change then.
Might be cleaner to do it now.
Yeah, just go.
So, how would we classify it?
Isn't wind already part of energy storage, if you wanted wind under, if, so if you're, if you have your, your turbine and you're charging batteries with a turbine, wouldn't the batteries that came, that resulted from any, anything sort of fall under...
That's how I would read it, too, because it's still energy storage.
I would think, I mean, given the definition...
So, I don't know how she, I mean, we can reach out, we can reach out to her and...
Either that or under this, energy comes in multiple forms, including, and then let's just list wind.
You know, currently allow large wind projects.
We don't have any in town, do we?
Well, every time someone puts an application, uh, the town's always a little crazy.
One was proposed before I got here, I think, and...
I thought so, too.
Well, Masonic proposed it.
And then, and then, um, didn't Bay Path try to do one, too?
Yes, and people went nuts.
On all anything.
This public notice is going to include everything that we're...
I've tried to have a separate item for each article there.
Right, but it's, 'cause it's gonna be one notice?
I would, yeah, I think that would be cheaper that way.
Yeah, okay.
We just include it all into one. So, wind energy conversion systems are allowed in all districts, except for village by site plan.
I think special permit, bring that, bring that right in, special permit.
We could add that, there's another article where that could go if you wanted to.
We don't, we just, we, we wanna stick it under the energy storage and, because we only have so many slots on the Warren article, eh?
Who knew we have?
What?
How many?
Uh, well, we got, um, reserved for, for all of these that are on this list.
Okay.
But the Warren is now closed.
Right.
So, nine of them, but honestly, we could...
We could modify an existing, these aren't cast in stone yet, these are still subject to your approval, so we make changes to what you have in front of you. So, you, we'd like to make wind a special permit use.
You agree, put it in special permit, with a vet.
I'm surprised we didn't have anything on wind now anyways, what do you mean, uh, storage for, for wind?
Yeah, so, um, when...
No, the actual site of the wind.
Actual, actual is allowed everywhere by site plan, and we should just put it special permit, and, and again, it just gives us more discretion if the, if there's houses right there or schools, I mean, I know there's other regulations with schools and stuff, but... It just, it, sometimes it takes a human eye to look and say, doesn't, and to be able to have the discretion to say, they clearly shouldn't go there, like, it doesn't, it's...
So, the next wave in energy generation is probably gonna be fuel cells.
I, I, I've heard that by, from a hundred different people, and that this solar is gonna be obsolete in, what, five years, I've heard that.
Fuel cells is the next technology, but I'm not sure there's enough known, or maybe we put something in to say special permit, I don't, I don't know.
What's the process of that, though?
A fuel cell, it, it's, it's a, it's a chemical generating process, so it's, it's, you know, um, smaller than solar arrays, but, you know, it's, it's a chemical, electrical generator.
You should wait for that technology to become available before you amend the zoning by law, because you don't know enough about it yet. I can add, um, I know the wind energy conversion systems to this article, that list, L N and S, just add in to the article, require special permits.
Okay.
If that's what you, if you'd like.
Yeah, let's get it on it, let's, if, if we're looking at all, you know, all the, the energy storage, let's just get it in and let's, get that in.
Yep.
You guys on the board when Masonic tried to do the windmill?
Yeah, that was interesting.
Yeah.
It didn't seem like a bad plan, it's the, the neighbors just was, were just free.
Yeah.
They were gonna kill birds and they were gonna get brain damage and all the kids were gonna get autism from listening to the tick of the, you know, it was pretty, but you feel bad, but they truly got a lot of their data from ihatewindmills.com, that's where it came from, like...
Guess I've been close enough to a big enough one to really have an opinion, but they are ugly.
Well, I have to say, having been close to them in Utah and again in Denmark, they're actually, they can be made quite lovely, they, you can see them for miles, they're, they're almost romantic looking, if you will.
In, in much of Europe, and Germany has a bunch of them, too.
Yes.
They can be made nice looking.
Yes.
But no one wants to go through the money to make them nice.
Can't make it look like a tree.
But I mean, you know...
It's like a cellphone tower, you can't make it look like a tree.
It wants to look like, have like a lighthouse kind of, people could live in them, you could... Maybe low, maybe low income, so we could get a, we could bump up our percentage.
Exactly, I always liked the way they looked.
I think they're awesome.
I'd actually talked about putting one up a one time years ago from the house.
Any other, so what does, well, we're all probably prepared and...
Yep.
There's a ton of reading material here.
Start on the seventeenth and hopefully it doesn't go over.
So, it's gonna be on our agenda on the seventeenth, does that work?
Do we have these amendments posted on our website or we should?
Not yet.
Okay, so, we should get those posted up there so that people can get a look at them. That sharp in the pitch works.
There are a couple of other items of information here, uh, you see a letter from James Philbin on, uh, the four score marijuana plan. How we present this at, when we have the hearing, uh, the next meeting, what they have commented on, on their plan, they obviously would like to see zero order emissions from, from that project.
And that should, I mean, with the order engineer, that should take care of that.
Yes, we should, we should get clarification on that. Uh, item fifteen, uh, is some correspondence between the building commissioner and, uh, James McMahon on the plant process for the, the allowing of the dispensary on Worcester Road. So, just so you know, um, they're working together to, so that when they submit a plan to you, it will be something that's allowed.
So, who's, I'm sorry, what, who's working on what?
James McMahon came to the meeting of the neighborhood a couple of weeks ago.
Yep, yep.
And presented his concepts for...
For green gold.
Allowing, right, uh, retail sale of recreational marijuana, and you, things requiring him to come back in for site plan approval.
Yep.
And he indicated that he would do a shuttle service, have an off-site parking lot, so a lot of those correspondence from Worcester West is concerning that offsite parking issue.
Yeah, they're, they're working on that so they can come back to report to us a little bit, and I also ran into Jim and I said, you're gonna have all these cars waiting in this over behind CBS and, like, lots of people just waiting, is, is there gonna be bathrooms, and they said they're looking into all of that, so...
I was gonna say, so, so, 'cause retail's only allowed in industrial right now, are they grandfathered?
Yes, Healthwise is, is grandfathered.
Are they grandfathered?
Yeah, Healthwise has been in, since...
But they, they didn't submit...
No, not for recreational.
Oh, not, not for recreational.
They did not submit a plan to recreational?
No, they were in for...
So, are they grandfathered, is recreational and allowed use in that property?
Their land must be, their land is, is...
No, they did not submit a plan, but I believe under the cannabis control regulations, they're allowed to, to add recreational by state law.
Are they? Okay.
But they have to come back to us.
They have to come back to you for site plan approval.
Right, now are they gonna present new drawings and plans?
Even, even in a zone that's, I'm sorry, even in a zone that's not zoned for recreational, they can still open recreational?
So, what happens is they...
But you think of a freeze opening zoning?
They have a building permit.
Okay.
The building permit gives them protection...
Okay.
From the zoning changes.
Okay.
So, they're allowed to commit under the old bylaw.
Definitely?
Yes.
Yeah.
But they, but did they pull the building permit only for medical?
Yes.
So, I think that's a, I think that's a...
It's, it's a building permit.
That's a lawyer question, can we use Mark for other things?
Well, no, I think it's a, I think it's clear, it's just that if you have a building permit, you're...
I, I, I think that we need to, to have council okay that before we permit anything that we shouldn't.
Absolutely.
So, let's, um, let's ask for approval to ask council, um, a question and see, if we just wanna get it in writing from an attorney, um, perhaps we can use, utilize Mark. He'd be a great person to ask a question to, and, um...
Is he up on, is, is Mark the best person to ask for cannabis?
Yeah, he's leni, so he's not...
Yeah, he's leni, that's what comes...
Doesn't matter, it could be a gas station.
And he's all, and he's all studied up.
It could be a gas station, it could be anything. It could be a gas station, it could be anything. If a gas station was allowed there prior to that, but they didn't have a gas.
But I think he's only special counsel to you for the appeals. You had him for a site plan.
And that's fine.
So, I'm not sure you can use him for that question.
We could, we could check, but, so, my thought is if, if somebody was gonna build a convenience store in an area that allowed convenience stores...
That didn't have a liquor license.
So, that allowed convenience stores and allowed gas stations, and they were gonna build a convenience store. But then the zoning changed and gas stations were no longer allowed in that zone, would they be allowed to build a gas station? Because they opened a permit on a, on a convenience store.
My answer to your thing is no, they would not be allowed to build a gas station. Because at the time they came to you for the gas station, it's not allowed.
Well, that's kinda what I'm going at, but it, it would be good to get it clarified of somebody before we go against our own zone.
Because somebody's gonna say something to the other way.
Bill, you mind checking with Kurt first, see if he has any case law off top hand? Check with him first, then if...
I think the thing is the record, the, the cannabis control...
That's the trump card?
Granted them the right to do that, so...
No, the cannabis control commission has give them, give, give them the, um...
Yeah, just to clarify.
There's some gray area.
They get the first recreational permit, but it also says they have to comply with all of our zoning on everything. So, let's just make sure that we don't mess up on that.
Okay.
Um, and we wanna, maybe get an attorney or two's opinion before we, um, go ahead and move ahead with something like that.
I just have one other thing to add to that, because I attend the marijuana advisory committee. And Mr. McMahon, Attorney McMahon is there, and at the last meeting, he was saying, oh, I don't think that there's gonna be any problems. So many more have opened, you're not gonna see a big rush. And my comment and Danny Dowd sort of backed me up was, be prepared. Because I said, what happens when you go into your store the first day you're going to do recreational, or the first day you're gonna do medical? And you have fifty cars there, and you're not allowed to have fifty cars there. You know? You, you cannot just assume that you're not gonna have that many people there. You need a plan in place, and on the first days, at least for the first two weeks of medical and the first two weeks of recreational, you better have some other price.
Prepare for the hundred year storm for those first couple of weeks, just in case if you're...
But just the way he was saying, I was not comfortable with what he was saying.
But they also said they didn't have to come for a site plan for the recreational, so, and, and...
And they were also the ones that, um, offered something else, and then they took it back out. Oh, no cash and overnight and everything? Yeah, and they backed right out of that one? Yeah, I'm a little bit leery of him.
Slow and slow, slow and slow.
So, you might wanna, you know, take some time to read his response to Kurt's memo. Uh, he basically described his plan for shuttle service.
I'll shoot an email over to, um, Robin and ask her if we could have attorney, um, to look at that for us, um, tomorrow during my lunch break.
Check with, check with Kurt first.
For a while, you're in the bathroom.
Well, I'm in the bathroom.
It's not a camera.
We do have a set of minutes?
Yes.
For January three, the warrant for the open session.
I'm looking at his response, and it's gonna be like Walmart, where you can order it online, and then you can just go in with your little pin number, and they'll bring it up to you. A drive-up marijuana facility.
So, looking at the minutes?
And do we have to permit like a drive-through then?
It actually, it's in there, that they're going to do a drive-through. There's a special lane where they will, um, give it to you with your special pin number. That's exactly what I was talking about.
Was that on the plan?
It's on, if you look at his response, it's exactly what...
Was that on the site?
I don't really see it on the plan. So, maybe Cornerstone...
That's why I said we need to...
Cornerstone just closed it in Oxford. Perhaps they'll use deal with Cornerstone, because they have the drive-up lane.
That's what I want. I think it's a, I think it's a really good idea for people in cars to go buy their pot right to a drive-through.
There's no barriers left on the side of the cars.
Marty says a drive-up liquor store, so, you know?
The drive-through beverage store? Anything?
Yeah.
Open it up, let them drive right through. Two of them.
You know, McDonald's will be selling them off the side.
Bill, does the Board of Health have a, have a copy of the, um, so, I'm, I'm jumping way back to Morris Ford. Do they have a, a copy of their order mitigation plan, and have they looked at that? Board of Health should have a copy of that, right?
I believe so, yeah.
I thought they, I thought they had...
It's on the town website, okay.
If you read the whole memo, they said that they looked at the memo, and doesn't seem like it's enough, and, and, and...
Okay, but, but we've, we've got an engineer to look at that, but we'll either say it isn't, okay.
And they're in the loop with that, right?
Yes, they are, yeah.
Okay.
So, minutes.
So, minutes, um, I'll look over, yeah, I, I make a motion, we accept the minutes for January thirty-first, open session.
Aye.
Okay, you sorted, did both of them together for the open session and executive session?
So, we can't approve, we can't approve executive session, and it's a month where in executive session, and we didn't post for executive session.
I haven't written a deputy...
Yeah, we don't, this, this is just as we go into executive session, doesn't have those minutes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Um, I just have one question on this N E C. Is that going to be, we were talking this afternoon, and is that going to be behind Millennium? Or...
I haven't actually seen a plan.
It's, it's off of that, in that area. I don't think that they've submitted a plan yet for it, but that, it's not gonna be on the road, on that road.
Well, that's Sherbrooke Road or Sherwood Road.
Yeah, Sherwood Lane, so it's gonna be within this...
Well, read down, go down where that, it extends over, yeah, that, no, right there, and it extends over into the other zone? Isn't that what Kurt was saying? Sherbrooke, yeah.
Well, Sherwood Lane comes up and loops around here. I, I, it doesn't show, go any further than right here.
No, no, that's just the line on there. I did the same thing. Isn't that squiggly one?
No, it's a rubber.
No, that's, this is, this is a stream.
Oh, it's a stream? Okay.
And I looked on, I was looking on the, the G I S map, and, and I, I thought it stayed within the I G district to make, go along the border of it.
Okay.
So, I don't know if they're gonna build up on this end, or this end, or...
Okay.
So, I, I sent, oh, I sent out an email...
Charlton owns this property here, doesn't it?
Yep.
The town?
The town owns that property there, so it's, I'm not gonna go outside of here, this is...
I do have, uh, this is a, a map that they presented at the public hearing to the selectmen. Initially, so this is the alternative site, which is now their preferred site.
Right.
And that was their original site on the twenty. It's not very clear, but it's...
I sent out, I sent an email to the chair of the Board of Selectmen to, um, ask if they would approve, because they have to approve all committees. If they would approve a, um, an L N G committee, um, we gotta get their okay to do that. But we're the only interveners, so it just makes sense that we would sponsor, of course, like a committee.
They'll have to have a new public hearing for this one, because it's a new location, which would allow additional intervenors and, and everything. So, they still have a chance to, to jump in if they, if they choose to.
So, but it just makes sense, I mean, being the planning board, yes, so, to have, um, at least a representative from all the boards, so everybody can kinda get. And then a couple of residents, and a couple of residents that are really concerned, and they post, they're, they're publicly posting and stuff.
They have a better map on their side.
I have to keep the, we can have a committee that's not an official committee and have meetings anyways.
Clear.
But I feel like we're out of the loop, and I feel like we're interveners, the only interveners right now, and we're not getting very much information. And I'm hearing it from other people, and it's not okay. So, there needs to be, I mean, I don't know if, if we can even, like, pretty much send them a letter saying, we need to, I don't need to be hearing stuff from our town administrator.
Yeah, I don't...
You know, I, I think that we need to be kept up to date if, um, they're asking to not have a site plan review because it's too costly, that kinda stuff. And I think we really need to, to be part of it. I know there's even, um, other board members that are kinda wondering what's going on. So, it just makes sense to get a committee and get a, a small group that is very focused on that one. I don't even want, think I wanna be on it, so maybe somebody in here can volunteer to be very, very active on that committee, but, um, I'm just joking.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think the process, I don't think the process has started yet to get to that point where, they haven't submitted any.
There's information that, that's coming in, and then we get it, like, twenty days later. I just, I don't, like, I'm just, if you miss...
There was a site plan for that subdivision, or there was a, you know, for the conceptual drawing. So, I think all this stuff is gonna be in the hearings, uh, and once it gets into the hearings, that's where it's gonna be decided. That's where we can intervene, like, since it's...
Again, we wanna open our mouths when they say no site plan, we wanna open our mouths loud and say...
Right now, they're just gonna test the low end and seeing, you know, what's there, but that would all have to be in the site planning process or the, uh, approval process.
Well, they're, they're asking for no site plan.
Yeah, that's not...
Well, not cycling, I'm not cycling, but, but at the state level, citing the process.
Right, for the state level, I mean, they're gonna ask, like, the whole, they, they wanna be, they want us to, you know, support their idea of not pay tax. You know, to be, uh, you know, exempt from taxes, and I say no way. Like, those, like, those kinda things, we need to talk, like, we should have a committee together who kinda knows what they're doing. And then to keep everybody in the loop with minutes and the whatever, because people are asking me tons of things from the outside, and I kinda say, I know, I do know, and if, we need to be a little more transparent. I feel like, um...
Could we ask to be copied on any correspondence between the selectmen and, um, the power plant? Maybe that would help immensely, because then we don't have to attend their meeting.
We could definitely ask.
And see if there's correspondence being put out there. It doesn't, I mean, emails are easy. It doesn't hurt to add a name or two, that we're not violating open meeting, and then Jane can send it out to everybody. So, that way, everybody's on the same page.
Well, Jane is the con, is the main contact, so she should be getting stuff, but I, I think that, again, I hear, I'm hearing it from other, other people, and it's kinda, you know, I, I just don't think that it's good. Everybody should be kinda getting all the information at the same time, from the, at the state level.
Sure.
So, um, I'll make that my next project to work on to, but I sent the email, we'll see if we get a response. I don't see why we wouldn't be approved to have an official committee that we had minutes and stuff, again, to keep people in the loop.
Again, along with N E C, I just wanna bring it up again, that we are listed as having a meet, members of the Charlton Planning Board is having a meeting on February thirteenth. With concerning this project, and we didn't.
No.
Um, but Bill did meet with them, but still, online, it says...
That we did.
Met with members of the Charlton Planning Board.
Who else met with you? Who else was in the room?
Kurt was there, um, there were two guys, Jake Deivel and Boris Brenna from the company. And I had someone from the fire department, I think it was, um, Dennis Carlson.
Yes.
Anybody else?
So, change planning board to planning department.
Well, I just don't, anybody going to their site and seeing this, they're gonna say, planning board is at the meeting, why don't we know about it? No, we didn't have a meeting with them.
So, this is on there?
That's what, it's on their website. I went there today, and, uh, I was...
I mean, they should, we, we need to make it very formal for them. They need, they need to be transparent, and they need to get us information, and we need to go demand that, and...
We learned our lesson from V G G.
And Jason Cantara from the fact that we're also there.
Perfect, and, so, we want those kinda people to chime in and be part of that.
So, can we, as the planning board, write somebody and tell them, please remove that from their website?
Yep.
Or, or change it to a member of the planning...
She just printed that right before she came in, and I, 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 I didn't even know, honestly.
This is planning board business. This was a memo, and it's planning board business. Bring it on. Okay, I'm, I'm just saying...
I was saying, just send them a letter and ask them to... Send them a letter and ask them to...
I can write it as a member of the planning board, and I checked with my board on this night, and nobody was present, so please change your website.
You could say the town planner or building commissioner, whatever, you know?
Right, exactly. They were all there, and yes, they had the building inspector.
They just may have been incorrect in there.
Makes us look bad, though.
Yeah.
Perception is everything.
Is that anything else that, that you wanna?
No, everything.
Yes.
I have a question. Go ahead, Jean.
Oh, go on, it's probably more about them, on a subject that we're talking about, mine is...
It is not. Um, what is, and forgive me, just, um, I've been out of the office for the last couple of days, so I might have missed an email. And I know I missed February thirteenth's meeting, because I was out of town. Um, what is going on with the town planner?
So, um, we had a little meeting in here with, um, uh, Robin, Deb Noble, and us.
Us being, you and Jean?
Me and Jean, and Bill was there.
Okay.
So, a little uncomfortable, and the next day, I got a call saying we're not gonna be accepting the position. So, we are, um, so, when I was...
So, you say, you mean Peter?
Yeah.
Peter did not, he did not accept the position.
Did he know you two?
No.
Yeah, he called me and said, um, you know, I, he truly said, it seems like it's gonna be a tough environment, and I have another offer on the table, and I, I just, I can't see myself... In that environment, and, you know, it is what it is. Um, we did go, um, to the planner conference on Saturday, and I, I'm telling you, multiple planners said, um, after May twentieth, you'll have a line at the door. So, um, I'm glad we just did get to that point, and then we'll be able to, um, get, have some, some great applicants. I mean, local applicants that are local, that are in, like, close towns, after they're interested, four days a week, rate salary, um, just get us there.
What is the significance of May twentieth? I know it's town meeting, but what, I don't see any...
Town meeting.
Okay.
Same, that's, that's, that's what they told me, and I'm, I'm quoting, quoting them on that. So, um, we just have to kinda get, get through that, and that's, and they do. We'll go slow, snail's pace, and, and get us to, get us to there. We have the...
Should, should we re-advertize? Should we put something in?
Not right now.
You should just wait. Just make, doesn't make any sense, just...
Jessica's ready to pull her hair out, so. I did speak to Jessica the day, and I told her that today, Monday or today, Dr. Warner...
Yesterday, I think, you said you were going to go down.
Okay, could've been yesterday. Uh, I did, and I informed her that Peter's, she was waiting for a letter from Peter, the signed letter from Peter, that not to hold her breath, because it wasn't coming. She says, really? And I said, yes, really. So, Jessica's aware of what's happening. I did not tell her to run the ad again.
Good, just hold off, we'll, we'll get it done. We, you know, we, I go for the, just the planning board business, you know, we got appointed the council. It was a very, very long meeting. I went to fight for my citizen's petition, and there was a very long conversation on legal counsel. Unexpected to me, otherwise I would've invited, I would've posted and invited all you, but, um, it got brought up, and it was a, it was a mess, and some yelling and accusations. And they went to an executive session, and the next day, I got an email saying, you got your attorney.
Nice.
So, um...
Nothing was posted? Is that an open meeting violation?
Correct, I would say. There was a good forty minutes of, of, you're lying, because I have an audio tape going back and forth. It was that.
And it wasn't televised, because I looked for it.
No, it wasn't.
So, it was that, and...
It wasn't, it, it will never be...
You were there.
So, nothing on the agenda, maybe...
I can tell you what, I mean, I...
Oh, I've made a public records request for the voice...
You'll never get that.
Perhaps we should just send the same letter she sent us and send it back to her. Same wording, same everything, just...
All the same, all, it's all the same memo of open meeting law violation. Here is your advice on open, I will.
And by the way, I sent this to the attorney general. Just send it right back, just like...
We need to get past this.
It was very, very, it was crazy.
We need to put this to bed and then...
So...
So, basically, we're going to tread water until, um, okay, with nothing else changing?
Yeah, so, I thought Peter was joining, and I'm like, okay, let's figure out the last, the last, the last day.
Sure, it was last day.
And so, you got, and then you had vacation, so I guess, it's not even on the agenda, but we'll, as chair, we'll talk about the...
It's unknown business at this time.
Okay, it's unknown business. Um, whether, are you sick of us? Do you want, no. Do you, do you wanna stay around for a while, or what do you, what do you think? Because I was saying, if you, if you don't, we went to a decision writing class, all of us, and we're gonna be really good at it now.
Are you gonna do everything else he's been doing for the best?
Yeah, right.
I mean, all the hours that I put in for V G G are all available now, like, ten, twelve hours a week. But, so...
So, what's the pleasure of the board, right?
What do we, what do we want to do?
Or would you like to...
Okay, Bill has some, you're gonna be gone for some vacation, right?
Yes. I'm going on vacation from, I think, the fourth of April till about the fifteenth or so.
Okay, so we're having a meeting on the third?
Yes.
And then Jane will be back.
Jane will be back on the first, I believe, on the Monday. Um, okay, we gotta see if she posted that meeting for the third, and then we have to change something if she did.
Yeah, I would doubt it.
Okay.
Because it's always subject to change based on what happens at the previous meeting.
Okay. So, Bill's not gonna be here from the fourth to the fifteenth. On the Poland, right? Is that what you said?
Croatia.
Croatia?
Oh, right, cool.
Where?
Oh.
Uh, Dubrovnik.
Dubrovnik.
Do you? End up to the, uh, uh, Ummag area.
Nice.
Yeah. Is it a tour or is it just, you're doing it yourself?
Uh, going with my family.
Okay. Good. No, have you rented Dubrovnik?
No, never have.
Gorgeous.
Yeah, great.
Getting down to Martinegro too?
Uh, we've thought about maybe taking a day trip over. We haven't decided yet.
I did conference there about ten years ago. There for about a week.
Nice.
It's my clean dog. We went on Friday, conference was on Sunday, flew out following Saturday or something.
Wow.
Yeah, it was perfect.
Not bad. Nice.
So do we have any meetings while Bill's on vacation?
Um, probably on the third, seventeenth we have one.
Okay, good.
But I was, on the seventeenth, we're going to be doing all of those.
The warrants. Do we want to, do we want to meet on the tenth for some reason?
Well, that's what I'm thinking.
I think...
Oh, you're going to be gone, so when's this going to be to the newspapers? Because it has to be advertised in the newspaper?
I'll get it out either tomorrow or early next week.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that will cover us?
Yes.
For the, for the third, we'll be...
Okay. Well, no, not for the third. It will cover us for the seventeenth.
Seventeenth, yeah.
And so we talked about adding the twenty-fourth. Do you really want to add the tenth too?
No.
No, we don't have the one.
Okay, that's just...
If you can open on the, the hearing on the seventeenth, you really don't need to meet on the tenth.
No. And if we have to, we can continue to that additional meeting.
To the twenty-fourth.
Exactly.
And that's still within the timeframe.
And as long as we get everything in the, yeah, as soon as Jane comes back, she'll be able to take care of the other things. As long as we're covered for the third and we have any public, for anything that we need to put in the newspaper, any advertisement.
And we are meeting on the twenty-seventh with FinCom.
Right.
But that's early, right? Or what?
Six, isn't it six o'clock?
Yeah, I thought it was early.
I thought it was early, so we could meet before here.
I believe you got the email from Donna about that. I, I don't recall the time exactly.
So are we meeting on the twenty-seventh as us or just with FinCom?
Both. No.
No.
Just FinCom.
Just FinCom. So March twenty-seventh.
And that's for your budget.
Correct. That's six P M. And then we're meeting again on the third, the third.
Seventeenth to the twenty-fourth.
Thank you.
Twenty-fourth if needed. We can probably make that decision.
Maybe we won't. Maybe this will be smoother and we won't.
Well, I'm, I'm, you don't know what else is going to end up on the desk between the other two.
Good night.
Night, night.
All right.
Jane, do you want to just talk about our meeting today with, uh...
Yeah, we didn't figure out, did we come up with a date?
Four.
For how long you want to stay?
Yeah.
Oh, no, not yet. See, I can stay on if you, uh...
Well, you won't be here from the fourth till the fifteenth and we're having a meeting on the seventeenth.
It's only, and we don't, and then we only need to get through May.
Right.
Which I don't care about.
Okay.
But then if we do bring in on a new planner, I'm just, again, open discussion.
Jane trained Bill and Jane can train a new planner. Not worried about that. I mean, for the, for a planner, we're going to get an experienced planner. We already have some names out there. I already have some names. He's very interested. Um...
That's the best way. You can recruit somebody.
Yep. And I, so we, um...
The only thing we didn't do was print up applications and have them on each desk of each session. We didn't do that, but only because I didn't think about it in time.
They're online. They're talking.
They're online.
And when are, when are, when are, oh my gosh, we're meeting in May. Is it the eighth biggest?
First would be the first, May first.
May first.
Yeah, May first and May fifteenth.
And then town meeting the twentieth.
Correct.
What, you want to just do May first?
May first.
May first?
Well, we'll have a meeting on May first.
Right.
Would you like to continue to work until May third?
Sure.
Is that okay?
That's fine.
That meets the fourteen days.
Not May fifteenth to bring us to our, to our last one?
Through May fif, May fifteenth?
May fifteenth is our last meeting.
We'll make sure that's a really slow, a really, a really dead meeting. We'll, we'll plan accordingly.
Nothing is getting scheduled that night.
Okay. No public hearings, no...
Nothing, no, no public hearings.
Everything that comes in is going, is by appointment only and it's, it's, that's going to be, that we need to, we'll, we'll talk about more of that in policy, but there's no walking in plans and surprise start dates. There's going to be, you, we accept plans at meetings, walk in and make an appointment and we need to be much more strict about our timelines and what, going forward and...
That was one thing I just want to touch on. When we were at the planners thing, I was under the impression, or I got the impression, that everything goes through the town clerk first.
That's state law.
But plans usually, okay, maybe, maybe I'm missing a piece.
I just, for how, when Alan ran the office, that's how we wanted it. And that's why it's always...
Going through there?
No.
Coming in here?
Here first.
And they file over there, right?
Then you file it with the clerk and then, because you, by law, you're supposed, as the applicant,
That's the timestamp.
Go to the clerk. That's a timestamp for submittal, but all, Alan always had his policy that it comes here.
The lawyers said, the lawyers said that the timestamp doesn't start until it goes in there. So if applicant comes in here and brings it on the fifteenth and something happens and you don't drop it off until the following, say it's, it's Thursday, you don't drop it off to the following Monday. The, the applicant is going to be all ticked off because of the time.
Well, on the flip side, I'll tell you why Alan used to do that. Because Alan was trying to help the people who were bringing in plans to make them nice. He wanted to make them perfect, if you will. He wanted to make sure they, um...
He wanted to look at them, make sure...
Look at them, give them advice. So what he would do...
Why is that supposed to happen after?
And I agree with that.
They can submit a piece of paper.
But I'd also like to start, any of these big, any of these big plans that are coming in, um, and, and I talked with, when we were, we had, we're all together in a room with Deb and, and, uh, and Robin too, talked about like some changes and I think when anything, like certainly, like for example, if VGG would have come in, we should have had, you know, Kurt commit, you know, you know, Todd, um, Jim, everybody on, at this table when the, when the plan was brought in. So, not even, I'm sorry, before the plan, I had this big idea.
That happened.
Right. We just, it was all just that in secret. But I mean, openly in, in, in a room with an appointment and have everybody on the table, like con over, you know, everybody, and Kurt might say, well, you're going to have to do this. And, and, you know, the planner might say, you're going to have to this, but you're going to have to do that first.
But that's what EDC was designed for. EDC was designed that you get on the EDC agenda, they'll tell you who you're going to need there. So Kurt must, this was going to be there, Alan was going to be there, to your point, exactly. And then EDC says, and so EDC says, okay, this is what we think. And Alan would attend every EDC meeting and he'd say, okay, well, your sight lines aren't this and this and this and this and that and this and that. They'd go back to the drawing board, revamp it a little bit and then file. So the, because the EDC was...
They'd have an advisory board.
Exactly.
Well, after, after May twentieth, well, everybody will get along a little better. And so we'll be able to have, figure out what's going to work best. And because EDC does meet in the middle of the day and maybe that's good for developers or maybe it should all...
And that's exactly why they started doing that. Because EDC used to meet, um, during the day so that the working people that are bringing these plans in can then bring them in. And the idea being that it was supposed to be during Alan's work time.
All the department heads worked during the day anyways.
Well, right.
So they all could, so everybody could come in here and talk and do the roundtable with it.
That's right.
And really, how many people really show up to the EDC meetings?
They don't anymore. Because the EDC used, and now that Debbie's not here, I don't mind saying this, and I hope this doesn't go in notes, but EDC used to mean something. It used to be the first, it was used to be the foyer to the planning board. So you'd come in, you'd present your plan and it, it was the meat and potatoes. And then it would go to the, we had no authority except to direct. And then it would go to the planning board who could make all the rules and regulations. What ended up happening is because a year went by with no EDC and then what got put on, it, it just kind of fell apart. Um, and then that process stopped. So people weren't bringing in plans other than very preliminary, like the mushroom guy came before on a super preliminary plan. But it wasn't the same as it used to be. It wasn't a plan like this where maybe something was wrong and they're saying, okay, well, you know what, I would do this, this and this. Okay, so now you're not wasting your own time.
Or, you know, I want, I had this big idea and you say, you want to do it here? No.
Exactly.
But you can go over to this area and do it, that kind of stuff.
We should put this on an agenda to talk about. Just, just the, a list of rules of what we should be, the by and by.
Um, the, me, and, and I've been talking a lot about Karen, Karen Spiehak about this. And I said, there should be a major overhaul on all of our policies and procedures, not just, it doesn't just policy, procedures in this building to make us more user friendly. With transparency, with, with being friendly to developers and all that will happen in, in, we, we, over the summer, really start revamping down on how all the boards can work together.
You want to direct, quote, "Twelve years ago, Alan came before the EDC and said, added that exact thing. I basically want a map of the town hall. If you're going to do this, who, who do you need to see, what do you need to do?" And Robin said, "That's what I'm here for." It might not have been twelve years, but it was a number of years ago. "That's my job. That's what I'm here for. If they come to me, I will direct them." And so that's... And I'm not saying that that was the wrong thing to say at the time, but that was Alan's big point, is that he wanted a map. He wanted people to know. That's why he liked the, um, the guidebooks, if you will, the permitting books. But the problem is, like, people don't know how to read those because they read like the permitting books. I mean, if you're just a guidebook...
They read into it what they want it to be.
That's correct. Correct. And so they don't know what they think the planning board will approve at that time. And that's where the EDC used to come in and say, well, we pretty much know where the planning board is going to go based on previous projects, based on how this is worded. We think that you probably won't be allowed to do that there. You can try, but we don't think it'll win. And so just, but again, it fell apart when...
But we will, I mean, we'll get to the point where we, we...
Which I think is wonderful, yes. I think that's awesome.
And there'll be enough people that are, who are heading that up to kind of follow all that process. Oh, and it'll...
It'll wipe out a lot of the time we spend just back and forth.
And I only bring that up to completely agree with where you want to go because I think it's a great direction. And it's too bad it wasn't done back when it was proposed originally for whatever reason. But we're here now and I think it's fantastic.
There are other towns that, that do that and it, and it works, and it works very well that they already have templates and stuff out there. So we'll be able to, you know, not recreate the wheel and, and, and make it, make us just more friendly to developers.
Just to follow up on that. Okay. Uh, I have a meeting today with Bill, Kurt and Ron Baron from CMRPC. We submitted to that DLTA request for the zoning diagnostic, which fits into exactly what we're saying here. Um, and Ron is going to, he has our master plan, he has the zonings, he's going to try to get it together. The problems are, the use tables don't match.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and because like seventy-five percent of Charlton is agriculture and agriculture does, today is not what it was thirty years ago.
We grow houses.
Yeah.
Um, and that needs to be addressed. And if it's going to be residential, it's going to be residential. It's not agricultural. And...
That's a good point.
If it means that, we came to the conclusion, there are no working farms in Charlton?
Nope.
There are no working farms.
No.
There's... Some people that hay, yes.
Yeah, there's gentleman's farms, but no true where they make their living.
But nothing with animals.
That's correct. Because I believe the, um, definition of a working farm is if they have to make their, the bulk of their income off the workings of the farm.
Right.
So do some of the horse farms fall underneath that?
Actually, then there is one. There's a couple across town that are, um, they do, um, oh, therapy horses. And so I think there's three of those here in town.
I don't even think that's a bulk of...
That's not a farm.
I don't think that's even a bulk of their, of their salary.
I can tell you that there's one farm that has all of the...
So we change A to R sixty and we say that, uh...
Get that simple.
Or you could have R one, R two, like curse.
Oh, there you go.
Different degrees of residential.
I'm not being argumentative at all.
Everything that's allowed in A now will be allowed in R sixty. It's, we're just changing.
Yeah, the name.
Large law residential.
Yeah. That's pretty much all it is.
That's pretty much what Kurt said.
Yeah.
Perfect.
R ones, twos, threes and fours, whatever. Um, the other thing, the bylaw and then the master plan will get done, but we, I think we all agreed to do your bylaws first.
Yes, exactly, yeah.
Um, and the definitions are, need to be looked at. When you go in the front, you have all your definitions. That needs to be tweaked a little bit because again, things have changed.
Yes.
Um, we have things now we didn't have. We have cell towers, we have solar, we have pot farms and that was not part of it. Um, we're going to work with public meetings as of the planning board, but we are going to bring in, um, would like to have joint meetings with EDC also to try to rejuvenate.
Yes.
EDC a little bit.
Perfect.
And, um, but the first, um, meeting, and we had talked about that was going to be on the seventeenth. That was the other thing. But we could push that back?
I think you might want to if you're going to do the zoning bylaw hearings.
Uh, we were going to have a kickoff meeting with Ron and to the whole board to see what he'd have.
So push that back to May first then?
Sure.
Does that, does that make sense?
That's fine.
And then we will bring in EDC later on on a more routine basis and maybe then just get it to the point, we can go back to the other way where they come to EDC first.
Mm-hmm. Cause there's no right or wrong answer. It's just a matter of how you want to do it.
Right.
Just do business in Charlton. This is what you do.
Right. And the timeline for...
I suggested that, that Jean be the point person for the projects since she's the CMRPC director.
Where were you, in favor?
I know. I did that a couple of times. I was missing it. I got to run over and bring it out. Sergeant of arms, that's all I know.
Drop the hammer.
Um, the time, um, timeline is, we'd like to get this done by the end of the year because that's when their thing is.
But that's just this. This is not our totally bylaw overhaul. This is just their diagnostic.
Their diagnostic, okay.
That's cleaner, okay.
Yes, we, he's going to point out...
At the end of the year, meeting July first, because that's the end of the...
Right.
And then, then we have to do an RFP to actually have somebody come and actually do the zoning zoning, right? So this is the diagnostic? Or are you talking about the end of the year?
He meant the end of the calendar year.
I meant the calendar year, yes.
But that'll give us time to do an RFP, July, in the beginning of July to...
He's just going to point out, he's not going to rewrite everything. He's just going to point out the areas that need to be looked at.
Beautiful.
So that save us from saying, well, what about this? He's, that's the standard I got.
Of the, of the whole entire project too. And that's, that's going to be great. Because we're talking, you know, like a hundred grand. If we can save twenty grand by, say, you know...
Like work.
We're letting him do the prelim.
Good reporting.
Yeah, excellent.
Thank you, Jean.
Good night.
I like that.
In all seriousness, I do have a bell that we...
This afternoon, I didn't have to remember too much.
In order to keep, um, uh, Butter's comments down, I have a bell that I used at another organization, they no longer use it, and it's just one of those like hotel lobby bells. Do you want me to bring that in so that way if someone gets a little bit talkative, we can say, "Listen, when you're dinged, you're out because."
Well, I don't, I don't wanna give, I don't want the residents to get, so having somebody, like this gentleman, he, I, I get it.
He's passionate, yeah.
He's passionate. Um, so sometimes, sometimes you, you got, like, you know, remember when Mrs. Dennis came up and talked? Was I gonna shut her down?
I couldn't, even I couldn't, I couldn't gavel her either.
There's certain, there's, there's.
Certain people you just cannot do that to.
Some, I, I really give the residents a little too much. I know, I know I do.
Like, Trisha Butter and I just kept going on and on and on and on and on and on, and I'm not blaming you, I just mean, I think that going forward, if we do get one of these, um, controversial, um, projects again.
Yes, I think, I think that for controversial, we need to have a timer on the table. It's the, the timer.
Any questions you learned? Any new information? Is there any new?
New information, there you go.
And Jean's really good at.
But the only thing, you, you can't, yeah, is there a question in there? Get to it.
And that's, I think that's what we, we're getting in a situation where there's a lot more comments than questions and.
But you can't pick and choose. If you're gonna time one person, you have to time everybody.
Well, and that's, I went to a planning board meeting up in, it wasn't Holden, and they were brutal. There was like a three minute egg timer and you got done and the moment, and if you went over, they're like, "I'm sorry, sir, but we said you were done. Onto the next one, onto the next one." I'm like, "You people are," and they were mean.
That's Holden.
Yes, but anyway.
We, we live in a very small town and you, that person you're shutting down is probably someone who lives down your street or goes to your church or a place balder.
You'll see him again.
So, I mean, I'm.
They're running off the road the next.
Yeah. That's right.
If they're going on to five or six or if they're repeating something, that's, I, I get, we, we need to, and I think that we should.
Any new info, information? This is nothing new.
What's anybody's feeling, I felt very badly for that person.
Yes.
But that's not in our realm, is it?
The only thing we could potentially do, and I'm, I'm putting this out, there's more of a question than a statement, could we say, "Okay, if you can get coverage for your granddaughter on Wednesdays from like one to four, can we a, ask as a pla."
That's a big, that's a big.
That's what I said. I said, "During the site plan, you could potentially talk to the developer and see if they can."
Doesn't the Sonaco have a daycare?
They do.
Yeah, they're not gonna take.
They're not gonna take our stuff.
The problem, I know what he was trying to say. A normal daycare, you know, four or five hundred bucks a week, uh, an autistic child a couple of days a week, it's, it's because of the special needs and stuff, um, although I don't know the age.
That's a good point though.
And I don't know, I don't know any of that kind of stuff, but I mean.
Nor do we need to know.
Are they too young for, are they too young to go to pub?
Yeah, you know, and unfortunately, he's, he's not the property owner either.
Right.
That's the other thing.
That's the bigger problem, is he really doesn't have a leg.
He doesn't really have any rights.
You hate to say it that way though.
But I can tell you that if you went to the United Way and if you did the two-on-one, because I know the director well, and he explained his situation in depth, they would probably find a spot for that little girl for the small construction phase and they could give him severely reduced rates.
Could you ask the applicant to pay half the?
Even that's a big stretch.
That's opening up a huge precedent.
I'm not sure you could ask, um, but if they offered.
That would be a great, if they came up and they offered, absolutely, but man.
If you imagine the precedent you'd be opening up, so for every butter that has an issue, I mean, so you have someone that sleeps during the daytime because they work third shift nurse.
Right, there you go.
Now, all of a sudden, you have to put them up in a hotel room for six months.
No, no.
I didn't sleep for a couple of months when they were doing the bridge over, and Stafford Street over the Pike. They were doing that midnight till six a.m.
When we were breaking the leg, when we were building our house, for two whole weeks, we had an excavator, great, we couldn't blast because we're on the reservoir, but, bang, I live three miles away in my other house and I could hear it three miles away.
Right.
Yeah, I'm like, "Oh, my, the contractors are there, breaking the, the new delight, right."
Right, exactly.
It's not a permanent thing.
Might be able to ask them to use certain construction techniques that would be less disruptive, even if they cost more.
I think.
Me, if I was a contractor.
Yeah, exactly.
If I was a contractor, I'd, I'd have a problem with that.
I'd have, I think you'd have better luck contacting the United Way, seeing temporary placements or just finding a place to go for those two days.
Don't they have other family members?
That's exactly what I was thinking, but I can't.
Well, no, they go to the sunhouse in the other days.
The Sonic organization is very philanthropic, maybe they'll, you know, see the light and say.
Exactly. That's exactly what I was thinking. You have other residents who go too, have, yes, have grandma take the kids somewhere else.
Make a motion for adjourn.
Second.